We call the meeting to an end, 6:20. Does it record? Okay, roll call.
Jay O. Perez is present.
Joel Garcia is present.
Linda Saravia is present.
Javier Ramirez is present.
Anthony Uresti is present.
Okay, so we do have a call. Javier Real is present. Next item, invocation, and pledge of allegiance. Our heads. Dear Lord heavenly Father, we come before you this beautiful evening, dear Lord heavenly Father. Have commune, have good order, dear Lord heavenly Father, and have good vision for this city, God Almighty. We ask that you bless the families, dear Lord, in this city, that you bless the surrounding communities as well, and make these meetings productive, dear Lord heavenly Father, not only for the taxpayers, but for the people that have businesses in this city and properties, God Almighty. I ask all these precious and heavenly things in your holy and precious name, amen. Pledge allegiance.
Let me pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number four, certified posting agenda.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the agenda was due to be posted seventy-two hours before the meeting, pursuant to state law.
Okay, any questions? Okay, certified posting agenda. And my next item, public comments. Does anybody have any comments? Okay, anybody ready?
No one's signed it.
Okay, good. Item number six, consent agenda items. We have a motion to approve items A through F.
I concur.
Second. Okay, there's a motion made by Ms. Saravia and a second by Mr. Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number seven, new business, seven, eight, will be, first item to be discussion and possible action regarding the election of Mayor Pro Tem, Standby City Secretary. The motion.
I want to nominate Joel Garcia Senior as our Mayor Pro Tem.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Ramirez, a second by Ms. Saravia. Any, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're ready to swear, Mr. Garcia in.
Good. If I can, just sort of confirm, since we have the council here as well, and council members, that all votes that are non-procedural have to be voice votes, I'm sorry, recorded votes. So there's an existing ordinance that says unless you vote no, you're considered voting yes, even if you have a voice vote.
Okay. I'll still ask, if you, if you have the voting. Yes, then I'll let's see. Pretty good. So we had a motion and a second, everybody's good. Joel Garcia. Okay.
We're here. Whoever you want, it's your day. Your family, come up here. Where do you want your family, they're gonna be taking some pictures, you tell me where you want, repeat today. All right, if you're ready. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joel Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of City of Palmview, Mayor Pro Tem.
City of Officer Palmview, as Mayor Pro Tem.
Of the State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my abilities.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here. I want to thank God for allowing us to be here today. I want to thank the council for having the confidence in me to serve as your Mayor Pro Tem. Congratulations to the new elected officials, Mayor, Commissioner Uresti, Commissioner Perez, and Commissioner Saravia and Commissioner Ramirez, thank you very much for having the confidence in me. I won't let you down, and I'm here to serve, and I'm here to serve the community of Palmview. I want to thank every single one of you for being here today, it's a very special day, and I want to thank Judge Ken Vasquez for doing the swearing.
It's a pleasure.
And so, we're here to work, and we're ready to work, so vamos alla. Thank you.
Want to sign it also right now? In the way you're here, here? Here? Yes, sir. Here? Right there? There. All right, then. And I'll get to the City Secretary. All right?
You're, you're on the line. And I'll gather the way you got to take them right steps.
Two.
One.
That's why you're going high naked, it looks skinny, or I like that.
You're pro the big man.
I'm telling you. I got y'all's way. Let me get Jose Luis, sorry, man.
Okay, all ready? Is the Mayor Pro Tem?
She's here? Right behind you. Right next to, right over there, right behind him.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you again, everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Item number, next item, item number B, new business, discussion and possible action on a resolution of appreciation for Mayor Pro Tem for his service. That by the interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, we have the resolution to thank Councilman and Mayor Pro Tem Javier Ramirez for his year of service as a Mayor Pro Tem. When the mayor is unable or incapacitated, Mayor Pro Tem serves in his capacity. And so I think our State Secretary has the resolution.
I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2018 dash forty-three R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmview, Texas, recognizing Javier Ramirez for honorable service. Whereas Javier Ramirez has served the City of Palmview for many years, and whereas Mr. Ramirez has served as Palmview Municipal Judge in 2015, administering justice for residents of our community. And whereas, in November 2016, Mr. Ramirez was elected as Councilman to represent the interests of the citizens of Palmview. Additionally, Mr. Ramirez serves on the Palmview Tax Imcrement Reinvestment Zone Board of Directors and Palmview Control and Crime Control and Prevention District Board of Directors. And whereas, Councilman Ramirez has been involved in many community organizations, including serving as a Little League baseball coach. And whereas, in November 2017, Councilman Ramirez was elected Mayor Pro Tem by this Palmview City Council. And whereas, Councilman Ramirez will continue to support and continue to serve the citizens of Palmview. Now therefore, being resolved by the City Council of the City of Palmview, Ricardo Villarreal Mayor, Joel Garcia Senior, Jose Luis Perez, Javier Ramirez, Linda Saravia, and Anthony Uresti, that Mayor Pro Tem Javier Ramirez is recognized for many years of dedicated service to the city, especially for his contributions as Mayor Pro Tem, and wishes him best of luck in any and all of his future endeavors. And a copy of the resolution will be provided to Mr. Ramirez.
It's been my honor to serve the community as Mayor Pro Tem, and I want to thank the new Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Garcia, for his support, Linda Saravia, and of course, our newly elected Mayor, Mr. Ricky Villarreal. They have been nothing but supportive to me, and for that, I am very grateful. And I am also grateful now to Anthony Uresti, the new Commissioner, and JL, thank you for taking the time and having the courage to serve on this board. I tell, I told JL, when I congratulated him for the first time, that we're gonna have fun. And this is something that, you know, to be a public servant, it takes a lot of courage and a lot of humility to serve our community. And I just know deep inside that you two possess those things of loyalty, and for that, I'm very grateful. Thank you very much.
Okay, next item.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we can have a vote on that, a motion and a second and a vote.
For Javier, is there a motion? Move. For the resolution on second, for the resolution on appreciation of Mayor Pro Tem Javier Ramirez. Got a motion by Mr. Garcia and a second from Mr. Uresti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, good, motion carries. Item number D, new business, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of City Attorney approving a professional service contract, adopt the corresponding ordinance, amending fiscal year 2019 budget, and swearing in staff by the interim city manager.
On this item, Mayor and Councilman, and I want to take this time also to welcome our new Councilman, that is Anthony Uresti. I've been here about a year and a half, and I'm looking to work with you during what will be a transition period. There's been a lot of good work done by this council, and we're hoping to take something good and make it better. So welcome on board. That having been said, I began working here in Palmview in April of 2017 as an interim, as a consultant, and then turned into an interim basis. And so I had a conversation with the council in October about what we were gonna do in terms of having someone there that's gonna be permanent, have some stability, I think that's important for the community, especially in this position. So that's kind of what precipitated having this item on the agenda. What I'd like to do, if the council also approves, is go into executive to discuss this, and then move forward with the decision when we come out of executive.
What's your recommendation? Oh, we need a motion to go into executive on this item?
To move this to executive.
Yeah, so there's a motion to.
Second.
And a second, a motion by Mr. Perez and a second by Mr. Ramirez to take this item into executive session, and the item is discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of City Attorney. Item B. Motion.
All right, so it's C.
Uh, C, okay, I'll take that back, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of City Manager. Right, approving the employment contract, okay, there we go, that's yours. All right, item number C, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you ready opposed? No, okay, so we have, we have a, we're gonna go motion to approve, you go into executive session. Do you want to take that in right now?
No, we'll know later.
Okay. Item number D, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of City Attorney approving professional service contract, adopt and corresponding ordinance, amending fiscal year 2019 budget, and swearing in staff by interim city manager.
On this side of Mayor and Council, the city charter requires that the, well, actually, I think it's permissive, that allows the council to appoint a City Attorney. We've had Gassas Ebedo serving that capacity for quite a year now, and so he is, I believe, tendered his resignation, but at this point, we are looking to have that position show, and so.
I'm motion. Okay, I'm motion to.
Can I, one motion to make this item to the executive.
Well, I made the motion first.
Okay, is there.
I made the motion.
You made, okay, you made a motion to.
I have completed.
To approve?
To appoint a City Attorney, and that would be Eric Flores.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and there's a second by Mr. Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, we got one nay. And we got two nays. And we got, okay, so we got three motion carries. To, a discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of Attorney.
Okay, so now we swearing?
Since everybody's worked their way up here, before we proceed with this, I just want to say that, you know, Kino, Eric, and Kino, I've known the family for quite a while, but what stands out to me about Eric, and I know that some of his comrades are here, is that every time that I do, every time that I hold a jury, and a jury comes into my room, I always ask them, how many of you have served in the military? And I let you speak, fine gentleman, have. And the reason that's important is because this community, this city, this governmental body, the court system, every day, we're able to live the way we live because of what they do for our country. I know that serving as a detachment commander, I did the same thing when I was in law school. It's not easy, serving in the military, it's hard. But more importantly, your families endure the sacrifice as well, because oftentimes, we thank the service member, and I thank you for your service to our country.
Thank you.
But oftentimes, we forget about the families, because when our soldiers are deployed, their families are home, their spouses, their children, their parents. And guess what, when the soldiers are deployed, the families are enduring the deployments too. And so I thank you guys for supporting our service member, your son, and all the other servicemen. So let's give them all a big round of applause.
Aye.
Aye. Eric Daniel Flores.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
The City of Palmview.
City of Palmview.
City Attorney.
City Attorney.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best.
And will to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Who are we looking at first? Hey Eric, is that official, do you sign over there? Yes. You want to take a picture, the same signing?
Yeah.
May she print your name.
Well, while he's signing there, I'd like to say something. I'd like to say something about this young man, and I've known this young man since he was a little boy. And he's not a little boy anymore, he's a grown man. Grown up to be a very smart, intelligent, hard-working soldier. I don't know what else to call him, but. Independent and everything about. Never, he did good.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'd like to have a thorough thing. It was about forty-eight years ago that my father decided to form this city, Palmview. I don't know how many of you know that. But he raffled off a gun, he bought a rifle and raffled it off to pay the five hundred dollars that it was gonna take to establish this city, okay? And I'm very proud of the fact, not just of my son, even of Tony Uresti, who gave us a nabo today, and Mr. Perez, that are products of this city, okay? They are products of this city, and so is Eric Flores. They went through the club here, the Boys and Girls Club here, and for that, I am so proud of these three guys. Congratulations.
I'm gonna say something as well.
Commissioner, you have the floor.
Maybe y'all don't know this, but Eric and I grew up together, we're best friends growing up, and our families had our differences throughout the way, and my nabo came from different reasons, but I greatly appreciate him being here today and being a City Attorney. We haven't worked together since our eighth grade science project. Since then, we've had a good relationship together, and I appreciate him being the City Attorney.
I promise that will be too long-winded.
Hold on. One more.
Can I say something really quick? I want to say that Ms. Flores.
Your teacher.
Was my teacher. Many years ago. And you were my student in one of the GT camps.
Yes, sir.
Terrific student. Awesome. It's our first meeting, there's a lot of stuff that we need to check. I apologize for whatever it is that we judged on, but there's personnel changes, and it's really hard for us to go in without the data. But your family is amazing. Kino Junior, awesome job, Kino. And Mr. Flores, likewise. So congratulations again.
I'm gonna be very brief. Eric, you made me very proud to be from Palmview, specifically because you are a product of this city. And for that, I'm very grateful. Kino, Deborah, thank you very much, you've done a great job with your kids. Kino, congratulations as well. You know, I spoke to Ms. Garcia just the other day, and your grandparents, and they're extremely proud of you, Eric. And I told them that you will not let us down, and I am almost positive that that's gonna happen. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Commissioner.
First and foremost, I want to thank Jesus Christ for allowing us to have this beautiful day, and to allow democracy to go through its form. Second, I want to thank the Commissioners for giving me this great opportunity to come back, and not only, you know, from serving my nation, state, and now my community. You know, Judge Vasquez made a good point in terms of dedication, right? And being a detachment commander, which I currently am, still serving. I'm gonna give that same dedication that I've given to my nation, to this community. Like Commissioner Ramirez said, and like my mom said, I was a product of the city. You know, I was born and raised here, you know, I went through the Parks and Rec program here, I played baseball here, and now you guys have given me the awesome opportunity to come back and to serve this community. So for that, council members, I appreciate it, thank you so much. I congratulate the new members, and I hope that we can turn that nay into a nay here in the future.
Picture, photo?
Get to work. Where we want.
Is it straight or not? We're good with item, oh, the item P. Now item seven E, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution providing for the nomination of approval of municipal court deciding judge and interim judge, budget and swearing in, that by interim city manager.
On this side of Mayor and Council, the city charter requires that the, that the mayor nominate a presiding judge, and it has to be approved by the council, and there shall also be an interim judge. So we're looking to make two appointments that serve the term of the mayor, and the council also sets a compensation for the judges, and that cannot be reduced to give over the term of the four years. Do you want to take this into executive session?
A second.
There's a motion to take this item into executive session by Javier, and a second by Ms. Ramirez, by Ms. Saravia. Excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item F, discussion and possible action to advise and consent to the appointment of an amending fiscal year 2019 budget and swearing in, staff by the New Resources Department.
Which item?
Okay, discussion and possible action to advise and consent the appointment of a chief of police, okay, determine proper compensation, adopt, and corresponding ordinances, amending fiscal year 2019 budget and swearing in. This would be our chief, please. Is there. There's a motion to put this item into executive made by Mr. Perez, and a second by Ms. Saravia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? All right. This is going into executive session as well, we have three items. Item F G, seven G, discussion and possible action to advise and consent the appointment of a municipal court administrator, determine proper compensation, adopt corresponding ordinance, 2019. Okay, so, okay, Mr. Garcia, there's a motion to put this item also into executive session, seconded by Ms. Saravia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Senior D, H. Item H, discussion and possible, discussion and possible action regarding the resolution providing for a representative alternate and three proxies to the Idaho County Metropolitan Planning NPO organization, Transportation Policy Committee, it's a good one right here.
They're the ones that have the team on their side, so they would be the plan, they would be all that on their side.
So we got the interim crew ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, do that.
Go move her through.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Garcia, a second by Ms. Ramirez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number L, or not number, letter L, the seven L, discussion and possible action regarding authorization of finance of an ambulance, staff by the Fire Department.
Good to be Mayor, City Council. That's the financing for the second unit that was ordered, has been on order since June, when it was approved by council back then.
How we doing with person?
It's extremely busy right now, we're averaging about eighty calls a month of service. We're having to transfer about, anywhere from thirteen to twenty calls a month to our backup provider to provide service to the community. So this would enable us to hopefully fill that void, to, for us to be able to to respond to those incidences that we're having to, having to send to the backup provider. So that's what this is for.
This ambulance will be housed?
Correct, at the sub-station, sir.
And it's in our budget?
Well. Is it already existing?
Correct.
Yeah, if I could hear, Chief, what happened is that we've had our first ambulance, it's gonna be a year in February.
It's gonna be a year in February.
So it's been very, very busy. We're sending away calls because it's, we just, we can't handle all the calls. And so earlier during the budget cycle, we approved a second ambulance to purchase it.
it. And so the plan there was to staff it only during peak hours and hire part-time EMTs, paramedics. And so, we had, we requested the ambulance, it was delivered, and so we have it here. But we've had some issues in terms of the reimbursements from Medicaid.
Correct.
I think that's a fair statement. We have more than two hundred thousand outstanding, and so we're working with Senator Ojos, who's helping with the state to try to get that money. But we're having a little finance problem in terms of getting those funds. And so that's why we're asking the council to approve that we go out to get some financing, maybe a five-year note for the ambulance, and analyze it with a vehicle, and move forward.
Move for proof.
A second.
Okay, we got a motion for approval of authorizing financial ambulance made by Ms. Garcia, a second by Ms. Saravia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item, letter M. Discussion and possible action regarding a resolution, amending resolution of 2017-24, providing for changes to the regular meeting schedule for December 2018 and January 2019. Staff by...
On this item, just by way of, I guess, educational purposes for the community and for the new council members as well, the city charter requires a meeting once a month. But there was an ordinance that was passed in December of 2016 that said that the council shall meet twice a month, the first and third Tuesday of the month. And so if we're going to postpone or cancel a meeting, we have to amend that ordinance. Otherwise, we're in violation of that ordinance. So we have an opportunity right now to change the schedule for December. There's a lot of activities, there's family going on in terms of functions. And so, right now, we're meeting on the fourth and the eighteenth, and then we're also meeting on January the first. January first is a holiday, it's New Year's Day, and so we can meet, or we can cancel that one, or reschedule it. We can do the same thing.
We're with the commission, because I'm sure we're gonna...
We don't have to meet twice in December. We can only meet once, or we can... So it's whatever the council wants to do.
So I make a motion to amend it, to meet back in December on the eighteenth, just have one meeting, and then in January on the fifteenth.
A copy of the calendar is provided, so you can see, and it shows the...
And January fifteenth?
Do we need more meetings in January?
Is that, when is, is that President's, it's MLK Day, or when?
It's on a Tuesday, so... What, the 21st?
Okay, we have a motion for, we said the what? What was the date?
One meeting of the regular scheduled meeting. We would just cancel the fourth, and meet on the eighteenth in December.
Nothing for January?
January first, we will cancel it, and have a regular meeting on the fifteenth. That's the motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Saravia, a second by Mr. Garcia. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item number, letter N. Discussion and possible action regarding the ratification of net modification agreement of 2011.
I recommend that we go into executive based on some contract negotiation.
Is there a motion?
A motion to...
Ms. Saravia to go and make the motion, and Mr. Ramirez, second. We're going to executive session. All in favor, say aye. Letter O. Discussion and possible action regarding an ordinance amending the master fee schedule to provide for modifications of solid waste collection. Staff by Finance Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'd like to welcome my two council members, Mr. Perez and Mr. Odesti. I'm at your service. Anything that you all need, just call me. To continue on this item, we recently have undertaken an audit of our collection, waste services, and their rates. As we're honestly, we're finding some items that might need to be clarified or uniformly standardized. So, the Finance Department is recommending some rate changes to our waste, which is the trash, collection services for the residents of Palmview. The rate changes is very minimal, and the reason that we're recommending this is that we have a uniform system of how to set the rates.
How does this affect the residents?
If you were to look at your analysis, the residents with, which is the majority that have just a single receptacle will not be affected. The ones that will be affected would be the residents that have two, and I myself are among that, those residents that have two receptacles. And then, we're gonna, it's gonna affect the commercial, all the commercial rates.
By how much is it?
Uh-huh. If you look at your analysis on your spreadsheet, the residents with the two cards will have an increase of about two dollars per month.
Okay, what's the purpose?
Yeah, it's to establish uniformity and to...
Uniformity?
Yeah, in the way that we...
We're charging more for some than less for others?
Yeah, exactly.
Do we know how many people this is gonna affect?
So, if you look at your analysis, there's, in, for the single card, we have three thousand two hundred and seventy-four residents that have a single card, but they won't be affected. In the category with the two cards, which I myself are among, are two hundred and sixty-one. Okay, but then, on the commercial rate, if you would look at your analysis, there's even one that we're losing two dollars on, because we're paying thirty, thirty-five dollars, and we're charging the residents thirty-three dollars. That's just an example. So we're trying to make all of these uniform, and where we're, you know, we are collecting as much as we're paying, we're probably from services.
So all you're doing is matching it to what we get billed as a city for this...
Plus a small administrator that, what charges us to do the minimum.
Okay, a motion to approve.
A second. Okay, we have a motion by Saravia, a second by Mr. Garcia. Excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item A. Executive session pursuant to Government Code, Section 551. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Saravia, you have a motion. Garcia, set in. Mr. Perez, a second. We are, everybody in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it is now seven oh six, and we're, I'm sorry, what? Oh, all of them? Where are those numbers at up here? Okay, so we're going into executive session at seven oh seven. The city has the right to adjourn into executive session at any time pursuant to Government Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.073, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.087. It is eight fifty-four here on this clock. We are out of executive session. Do I have a motion for...
I don't see...
Item C in New Business, seventeen.
Okay, I, is this on? I motion to appoint City Manager Michael Neal to approve an employment contract as discussed in executive session.
Okay, we had a motion. Ms. Saravia made a motion to approve Mr. Michael Neal, the City Manager. We have a second, Mr. Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Executive January first.
Okay, do you amend my motion?
No.
And you want to do the swearing?
Few words, Mr. Leo. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, thank you. First, I would like to say thank you to the council. Appreciate the opportunity to serve the community that I hold dear to my heart. Thank you to the people of Palmview. I look forward to serving the people of Palmview. I look forward to working with Mr. Olevadas to assure smooth transition. Look forward to working with new council members and the existing city council members as we discuss some of the issues and the challenges that we do have in front of us. But I think working together, we can get past this, we can move our city forward, and I'm really excited about it, so I look forward for January first. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are you ready to, or you want to... We have the forms.
You have it?
I have forms here.
Are they ready to be sworn?
If he wants to take the oath already. Or will it tell January?
Or do I have to do it in January?
Meeting in December? Do we have a... We have a December meeting. We can do it then. December eighteen? Right. Okay. In New Business as well, in executive session was discussion and possible action regarding resolution providing nomination approval of municipal court. And we nominated Noe Hernandez and Roy Ramon.
As presiding and interim?
Presiding is Noe.
Presiding would be, Noe Hernandez, and interim would be Roy Ramon.
I'm motion to approve.
A second.
Is there, okay, have Mr. Ramirez, Commissioner Ramirez made a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Saravia made a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Where are they?
Over here, Judge.
Okay, is one judge gonna swear the other one in, or...
They're gonna swear each other in, right?
First of all, thank you, Commissioner. I want to thank you all for having that precedent to be your judge, to preside there in the city of Palmview. I will try, and I will probably do the best of my ability to be judgmental, as far as be fair with everybody when they come to my court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Add-on to the judge. We've worked together. He's been here a little bit longer than I am. But, you know, we're here to help, key word, to help to be public servants of this community. First of all, we want to thank you for having given us the privilege of being here today. To the new commissioners also, who are just joining the process, we're here to serve everybody. We're here to help. One of the biggest problems, as you all already know, is this is an empty area. We need to help. And we will, and we will provide, Noe and I will be there. So without having to put any more delay, let me swear. Mr. Noe first. Should we repeat that for me, sir? I, Noe Hernandez?
I, Noe Hernandez.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of the municipal, Palmview Municipal Court Presiding Judge.
Of the Palmview Municipal, Presiding Municipal Judge.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will do?
And will do.
Best of my ability to serve?
Best of my ability to serve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend the Constitution?
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And of the state?
And of the state.
Help me God.
So help me God.
As y'all know, this is missing on this video, because those people don't know.
The other mister judge.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is my micro lich, which I call my micro lich. And she will be with me, so I apologize. My right hand or my left?
Raise your right hand.
There you go.
I, Rojo Hello Ramon.
I, Rojo Hello Ramon.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties?
Execute the duties.
Of the office of?
Of the office of?
Palmview Municipal Court.
Palmview Municipal Court.
Intern judge?
Intern judge.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability?
Do my best of my ability.
Preserve?
Preserve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend the Constitution?
Defend the Constitution.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Judge, give me a second right here.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I would like to amend my motion to include, yeah, to include compensation as discussed in executive session.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the payment for judges as discussed in executive session, made by, motion made by Ms. Saravia, second made by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we have also set compensation aside from getting our judges in. Next item is item F, seven F. A new business discussion possible action to advise and consent the appointment of a chief of police, determine proper compensation, which was discussed in executive session as well, and corresponding ordinance amending fiscal year 2019 budget and swearing-in.
I'd like to make a motion to...
Yeah, on this item, Mayor Council, this is another important decision for the council and the community, the Police Department. It's about a two-million-dollar operation, it's the largest department in the city, and we had some very good candidates that came forth. But at this point, we're gonna, I'm gonna recommend that we go ahead and designate Gilberto Zamora as the chief of police.
I'll make a motion for that.
A second, the motion.
And compensation discussed in executive session. So we have a motion made by Mr. Garcia, and a second by Ramirez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have anything to say?
Don't arrest anybody here. Thank you, thank you, guys. City Council, Mayor, City Manager. You know, it's a live dream, starting as a young officer, and I want to thank you guys for giving the opportunity, trusting and believing in me, and being the chief of police of Palmview.
Thank you, Gilbert, for everything you've done. Thank you for everything you've done. You brought this department, you know, you moved it forward, and we expect some more good things from you, and bonding with the community, and being a public servant to the community, and working with the commission and the rest of your department. Good luck to you, God bless you, thank you for everything you do, and God bless you and your troops out there that are in harm's way every day. All right, so God bless you guys. Thank you.
I also want to say that, I remember when he started, a long time ago, but when we decided to appoint him as an interim chief, he never asked, "How much am I gonna get paid?" He never asked anything. What he wanted to do was serve our community, and he's served it well for the past few months, and he's been appointed as interim chief. And we've heard all the good things about him, and I hope we keep on hearing the same things. And I want to congratulate, personally, you know, congratulate you for doing an excellent job as an interim chief, and welcome aboard as the chief of police of the city of Palmview.
Thank you.
Chief, I also want to congratulate you, and to add to what the other commissioners, council members have said, is that it's very important to us as a council to show our community that our PD is, you know, approachable, that they're there to protect and to serve. And I applaud you and all your team, because everybody here has made a great effort, but it's reflective of the leadership, and that you've gone to do the block walking, and to, you know, just for the people to see that the police is not somebody to be scared of, but it's somebody that's, a department that's here to protect them, and I applaud you for that, and I, you know, ask you to continue doing that, so congratulations.
Just to reiterate what the other commissioners are saying, you know, public safety is the most important department in every community, and I think you're gonna be just fine. I applaud you and your officers. Thank you very much for your service, sir. You are gonna do a good job, and I just know that. Thank you.
Motion carries. We need a swearing-in.
Palmview Police Chief.
And the state of Texas?
And the state of Texas.
And I will do the best of my ability?
And I will do the best of my ability?
To preserve?
To preserve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend the Constitution?
Defend the Constitution.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Judge, give us time right here.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I would like to amend my motion to include, yeah, to include compensation as discussed in executive session on each other's forms.
Okay, we have a motion to amend unemployment for judges as discussed in executive session made by, motion made by Ms. Saravia, second, made by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we have also said compensation aside from getting our judges in. Next item is item F, seven F, on new business, discussion possible action to advise and consent appointment of a chief of police, determine proper compensation, which was discussed in executive session as well, and corresponding ordinance amending of fiscal year twenty nineteen, as you're swearing.
I'd like to make a motion to, yeah.
Yes, make your request. Yeah, on this item, Mayor Castle, this is another important decision for, for the council and the community, the police department. It's about two million dollar operation, it's the largest department in the city, and we had some very good candidates that came forth, but at this point, we're gonna, I'm gonna recommend that we go ahead and designate Gilbert Zamora as the chief of police.
I'll make a motion for that.
I second the motion.
And compensation discussed in executive session.
So we have a motion made by Mr. Garcia, and a second by Ramírez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
You have anything to say?
Speak.
I don't want to arrest anybody here. Thank you, thank you, guys, city council, mayor, city manager, you know, it's, it's a life dream, starting as a, as a young officer, and I want to thank you guys for, for giving me the opportunity, trusting and believing in me, and being the chief of police of Palmview. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert, for everything you've done. You've brought this department, you know, you've moved it forward, and we expect some more good things from you, and bonding with the community, and being a public servant to the community, and working with, with the commission and the rest of your department. Good luck to you, God bless you, thank you for everything you do, and your, God bless you and your troops out there that are in harm's way every day. All right, so God bless you guys.
I also want to say that, I remember when, when he started, a long time ago, you know, but when, when we decided to appoint him as a interim chief, he never asked, how much am I gonna get paid? He never asked anything. What he wanted to do was serve our community, and he's served it well for the past few months, and he's been appointed as interim chief, and we've heard all the good things about him, and I hope he keep on hearing the same things. And I want to congratulate, personally, you know, congratulate you for, for doing an excellent job as an interim chief, and welcome aboard as the chief of police of the city of Palmview.
Thank you.
Chief, I also want to congratulate you, and to add to what the other commissioners, council members have said, is that it's very important to us as a council to show our community that our PD is, you know, approachable, that they're there to protect and to serve, and I applaud you and all your, your, your team, because everybody here has made a great effort, but it's reflective of the leadership, and that you've gone to do the block walking and to, you know, just for the people to see that the police is not somebody to be scared of, but it's somebody that's, that's, a department that's here to protect them, and I applaud you for that, and I, you know, ask you to continue doing that, so congratulations.
Just to reiterate what the other commissioners are saying, you know, public safety is the most important department in every community, and I think you're gonna be just fine. I applaud you and your officers. Thank you very much for your service, sir. You are gonna do a good job, and I, I just know that. Thank you.
Motion carries. We, we pick you up. We need a swearing in.
This is good swearing.
Me? Okay.
My dad, my dad was gonna...
Can be, can be both, can be both.
You want your whole parents there?
Yes.
Give me the honor and, and put my bag on. Under the phone. Yes. It's, so, we have to make. Aye?
Aye.
Gilbert Zamora?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear?
Zamora, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute?
And I will faithfully execute?
The duty of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police, Palmview Police Chief.
Palmview Police Chief.
And the state of Texas?
And the state of Texas.
And I will do the best of my ability?
And I will do the best of my ability?
To preserve?
To preserve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
And of God. I also want to thank all the officers that supported him during his internship.
You see?
It means a lot that everybody working together.
No, don't put that in your eyes, you're blind. You're young. You're too young to work that deep. Look, he looks like a nerd.
No se baña, no se baña para tomar la foto. He looks like a nerd.
Shh. Give me that.
Ah, shh. He looks like a nerd.
Ready? One, two, three.
Can I breathe?
Hey, give me camera.
Hold on. Hi, mama.
Ready? One, two, three. Want to take a picture of a whole family here?
I took a picture.
Does that even half?
No.
She's over here. One, two, smile.
I'll get it back.
One more.
Thank you. Good luck, and I come up in order.
Okay, new order? Seven N, discussion of possible action, modification of, oh, G, 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 take that back, yes, G, discussion of possible action to advise and consent appointment of municipal court administrator.
Yeah, Mayor Council, this, another vacancy became open fairly recently, the municipal court administrator, and just to kind of recap, this has been a major momentous day for the city, did a lot of transition, starting at the top and forth and way down to our department heads, but we always like to promote from within, and so we've done that, I think, with Michael Leo, with Gilbert Zamora, and at this point, we're also recommending that we go ahead and, and I nominate, I'm sorry, appoint Yvette Lucero, who's working in our planning department as the, as the court administrator.